Okay, well, it's two thirds, so I will call the meeting of the Ramsey County Commission to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda is approval of last meeting's minutes. Do we have any additions, corrections, changes to make to that? We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Motion is carried. Approval of the agenda, do we need to make any changes?
I'll make a motion to approve this presented.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those same sign. Motion is carried. Mr. Gunderson up in the hall or anything? If not, we'll just hop into Kevin.
Yeah, it's really simple. It's down, we have one bridge that does qualify for replacement, but it's kind of in a precarious place. It's over by Indy Road Township on Front Street. So it's not a highly traveled road. The fact that South End is closed right now. They don't maintain it this summer. I think they have done some work to get it. This one that Wayne County fell on, so I'll get it back open again, North End.
What elevation is it at?
It was in on, that bridge was inundated in eleven.
Okay, so it was probably fifty-four, fifty-five, somewhere in that range.
So if we did replace this bridge, it would have to be a great age. And of course, like I said, the road was even underwater, south direction. So there'd be a hump in the road where the bridge is, that type of thing. So just to bring you guys aware, make you guys aware, but I don't know if it's something I want to put on our list or not. But it's one of our bridges that does qualify for replacement.
It's not currently being used?
Light traffic, maybe some hard traffic, but not a lot. Very, very little. Maybe hunting and fishing.
It doesn't hurt us at all putting it on the list and then?
See how it goes.
See how it goes.
Right. If eventually if we were to open that road to the south, then it may have a good chance of getting chosen or picked or whatever. Right now it would be tough to get put on the top of the list.
Lot of paring when you're helping in.
Right.
Or some live.
We're talking a three-foot water raise possibly, and who knows?
Last fall, there was probably eighteen inches, a foot to eighteen inches of clearance between the water and the bottom concrete beam. So it's at that level right now for last fall. You know, and of course, they're like eighteen-inch beams, so the water could come up another two feet before the deck is down. But anyway, just something to think about, I guess, we don't really need to act on today. That bridge wouldn't qualify for replacement.
Then you just put all of it in a pro grade.
Probably could, there's not a lot of flow there.
I don't really talk.
So if it comes to the point where they finally get that road open to the south, then maybe we wouldn't want to look at it for sure then. Because it would get a lot better chance of being chosen. So that's really all I have to present today.
You see enough, thanks, Kevin.
Yep.
Roger.
Yeah. Okay, start with Bobcat. And you know, the smaller S-70, the Skidsteer, they do not have any of those in stock or will not for a while because of, they're not making them right now. They're going with the bigger models that are more popular. This articulated loader, loader that is in stock, it has only the bucket available right now. And they said the blower and broom, that would be a next season thing. So I talked to Leading Edge, and they have a, what basically is a small garden tractor that would be adequate. Has a, but there are none of those in stock right now. And all they would get, be able to get in would be the tractor with the small bucket. And the bucket on that is half of what a Bobcat bucket would be. You know, the bucket on a John Deere tractor, very small. So, and they had a forty-seven-inch blower and fifty-two-inch broom, which is roughly the same size as the Bobcat. The snowblowers of, I think that was fifty-two on that.
That tractor doesn't have a heated cap, but it doesn't?
The tractor does have a cap.
Oh, it does have a cap.
Heated.
Is it heated?
Pardon?
Heated.
Yes.
Okay.
Everything's got a cap, right?
Yes.
I'm looking at something that don't have a cap.
Correct. Heated cap. And I talked to Butler, and they had nothing available. And anything they had would be bigger than we're looking for. They said their blower is sixty-six inches wide. And I said, yeah, that's a little more than trying to go around on a sidewalk, somebody get the light poles involved.
How wide is our sidewalk?
Well, the sidewalk itself is, it would be okay on, but getting between some of these light poles and the berm or the curb, that would be an issue. So on that bigger, bigger blower. Now the fifty-two-inch blower, I think that wouldn't be a problem. So the, like I said, the John Deere, it would work. Costs about half of what the Bobcat does, but the Bobcat loader, articulated loader would be much more usable, I think. Maybe all around a much better thing to have. You know, it's, you have four-wheel drive where the John Deere just a little, about this big on the front. Yeah, I said the John Deere can be better than walking behind the ten-foot, the ten-horsepower snow blower without it, but.
You can get a lot more attachments for like a Skidsteer, you know?
Probably. Well, the John Deere had all the, all the same attachments we're looking for, but like I said, the bucket on that is just childish play compared to the Bobcat bucket.
I didn't even know they made a little articulated loader like that.
John Deere?
Or Bobcat, I mean, they made one like that. Those are, that'd be a slick little unit because then that would, you could push with that nice, and you could stick the snow blower on the front. It's all front out, kind of like a tool cap almost, that'd be really nice.
Didn't we talk last time, it's so much easier to get in than the Skidsteer?
Yeah, the, the, yeah, so Skidsteer, the John Deere thing, it also, you got in from the side. But yes, Skidsteer.
Yeah, versus going over top the bucket on the Skidsteer.
Right. So.
But you said like the articulated loader, that you could get the loader, but not the attachments?
You have the bucket, and that would be it for the truck. And that was the same with all.
Okay, so basically you can get the machine with the blower, or the bucket, but no blower, no broom, like that.
And with the John Deere thing, they, they don't have anything in stock. They said if you put a name on it, you could get it as early as two weeks, perfectly two months. So.
It's not going to sell anywhere, right?
Fair enough.
You kind of think that Bobcat's the one?
Well, yeah.
Thirty-one, I looked at one about that.
No, the Skidsteer or the articulated?
No, not the Skid, well, yeah, the Skidsteer they don't have available either.
Forty-seven?
Like I said, that is available, unless they sold it in the last week.
So they have one on the lot?
They have one on hand. They said it's a holdover from last year. So chances of going on the last week are pretty small.
Is it sitting outside?
Yeah. It was anyway.
I drove by, it's pretty sharp looking. It looks like it'd be fun.
For a little.
Yeah, for a little.
Well, I just think there's, there's benefits from, I mean, all of these things are, you know, but something like an articulated loader or a Skidsteer, are going to be far easier to flip out, broom to blower to bucket versus, versus a tractor. I mean, not that there's anything wrong with the little John Deere tractor, I'm sure that would, like you said, it would serve our needs too. It's just it would be a little bit more difficult, though.
Quick attach.
Yeah, quick attach is always nicer, plus, like you said, not having to crawl over the bucket to get in. On a, on a Skidsteer would be a little bit, would be nicer, it would go outside entrance.
Safer.
Yeah. It's like, it's basically just like a mini payloader.
Mm-hmm.
You could do a lot of snow.
Yeah, it's just like running a big loader, main oil, smarts field.
Yeah. And that'd be, that, I think that would be kind of the catch me out in terms of being able to move snow around here. But they're not cheap, I don't know what they thought. I'm surprised Cap didn't have anything all through the day.
Well, like I said, anything they had, it would be a lot bigger.
Yeah.
And I guess I checked with High Plains Equipment too, and anything they had was way big.
So not, not for sidewalk, they don't structure all we're looking for?
They weren't looking for sidewalks.
Hey, and either of these funds, Candy, we could take out of that law enforcement COVID? Because I don't know if we budgeted for any of those, did we?
County loan?
Excuse me?
County loan, county loan for? For the, oh, no, it's not county loan, I guess it's a cop, the building improvement.
Building improvement fund.
Wrong term on.
Wrong term.
As long as the generator can come out of the other.
Did you got money sitting there for the generator?
Yep, because that was budgeted in building improvement.
We did budget for the generator?
Yes.
Well, I think if they've got it on the lot, that's the one we think's going to get the job done, that's the way we should go. I mean, just in my opinion, I guess. I know it costs more money, but I guess I looked at, we were talking about it the other day, and it's like a matter of, you know, how long do you think it's going to last? I mean, if it's built well, it should last a long time for us. But, you know, say it lasts, it's forty, forty-seven thousand dollars, but if it lasts twenty years before you got to do anything, I mean, that's a couple thousand bucks a year for the snow is really quite reasonable in terms of making it quicker and a little bit, a lot more comfortable, a lot safer. Just, it makes sense to me, I guess.
Well, I think, you know, if we get something like this, you're going to find more uses for it than you thought you were going to have.
Yeah.
And it's like, like buying a truck. I never thought I'd need a truck until I owned a truck, and all of a sudden it seems like everything needs to be held somewhere.
I was going to say, the problem with that is if people don't, then they won't. No, but I mean, just even stuff like having a broom on it, you know, in the summertime, I mean, when stuff blows in and stuff, you know, ooh and leaves, whatever, it's kind of useful for stuff like that, dude.
And the light agri, the light agri, you know, snow.
Yeah.
You know, you go down, right down to the pavement, the sidewalk, and.
And just you can get that snow clear in the afternoon, you get a half inch or an inch, just throw the broom on and bag it and snow.
I'd go ahead and make that motion, that we'd go ahead with the Bobcat articulated.
I'll say.
Do you want to include all of the other features listed here, Jeff, on that motion? So for a total of forty-seven thousand three ninety-three?
Correct.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing, now all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Close same sign. Motion is carried.
One thing, and I've mentioned this before, we're going to have this here. You know, we'll need a building, have to put a building up.
Yeah.
And I just ordered garage doors for home last week. They expect them to be here May ninth, is what they're figuring out. So keeping that in mind, we would have to at least probably get a garage door ordered fairly quickly. So we make sure we have it here this summer to put into the building.
Are we going to have to build a brand-new, like single-car garage-type setup, or?
Yeah, because of our launch, there's no way that that would never figure.
Yeah. And we would set it right to the south of the sheriff's house, there would be the thought process?
Somewhere in area, yeah, that'd be my guess.
Is there a way we can design it to add on to the existing building that we have there?
Um, well, that would, that would be nice.
You don't go into it and pull it if you want, or this is probably a car.
Right.
Floor.
No, as far as the generator building.
Oh.
And, you know.
Yeah, because are we going to have to make the generator building bigger, bigger when we bring the new generator?
No, that should fit. Once we get everything, I got the blower and stuff in there, the new generator should fit in the generator building. At least the one that we were looking at, that Tim Olson.
The, the previous one you showed us bits of, I think it was.
When do we expect the generator?
Pardon?
When do we expect the generator?
Well, we haven't even ordered yet. I mean, we got to do all that too, and I was talking to Candy about that maybe the next meeting. You know, there's got to be a, a, kind of a bid process for the architect or engineer, which we'll have to have. So, yeah, none of that's been done yet.
Well, I think it's.
Actually, on the generator, we know I'm digging.
Yeah, I think it's reasonable, at least in my mind, that we wait until we get the engineer in place to determine if they think that our building size is going to be adequate, because if they think we have to build something, then we can just make the building size right to putting them.
Right, it's going to save, it's going to save you so much space if you don't have two separate standalone buildings up in there.
But, you know, yeah, I don't know.
Assuming that we can, we can use this hopefully, but if we can't, then we'll have to press that bridge when we get there, I guess.
I know we talked about just driving a loader back and forth to the county shop.
For now.
For now.
For now, yeah, it's a little.
This season, yes, but not, yeah.
Eventually, we'll have to come up with a plan on how we're going to.
Right, right.
Yeah.
We're like, probably only need it one more, one time, right?
This year? Maybe.
We'll, we'll work on a building plan down the road, kind of thing, and, yeah.
I think once we put, yeah, once we put the wheels in, wheels in order to determine what we're going to need for the generator, then we can kind of go from there. Because if, if that building was adequate, then we could just put something next to it, probably. The only question I would have too is, is that building was added on at some point in time, I would assume? That little generator building? Or is that, that's not original to the sheriff's house, is it?
No, it was built probably in roughly eighty-three, eighty-two.
Because I was going to say.
It doesn't have anything to do with the sheriff's house, no.
Yeah, because we don't want to touch the sheriff's house, because if we do that, then I'm sure you've got all kinds of historic and whatever you have to deal with.
But they may not want you adding on to that, keeping the generator building separate from our fire.
Fire water. Yeah, so I mean, there's a lot of questions to be answered, but for now, we can go back and forth until we can come up with a long-term plan for how we're going to handle it.
Well, a generator throws off a lot of heat, I mean, motor heat, you probably don't want that motor sound.
And they already said, you know, that venting system, that it should have been about twice of what it is. And they will be, I know.
They, they proposing a natural gas generator?
I didn't think of that, but it would be a bad idea.
That would be the way to go.
That'd be a good idea.
We got natural gas.
Get rid of that condensation issue with diesel and LG and everything else that's not going to.
Never had an issue with that, but, yes.
Well, yes, we've had issues with that thing starting, and, and I'm wondering if that, we've had to drain the fuel out of that thing.
Well, we've just, we have done that just periodically to keep problems from arising.
Well, yeah.
But yes, natural gas, natural gas is there all the time, you don't have to worry about it.
Yeah.
It'd be an option.
Yeah, it's right there, they're the thing right there for the sheriff's house, so.
Keep it in mind, you bet, yeah.
They'll probably tell us that a natural gas generator should probably like twice the money or something.
Well, you know, I, I think, I think the fire department got, the one from, when NBC got out of that facility by downtown here, they got that.
Oh, so they bought it off?
And it was natural gas, and it works great. And, you know, down in the airport, we've had issues with LG and diesel fuel and
Oh, yeah.
water and different things like that, and so natural gas would be a, would be a good option to take a look at.
I'd love to have natural gas out of the park.
Yeah.
Okay. So, well, I'll contact Bobcat then, tell them we'll take the articulated loader and get the broom and blower on.
Thanks, Roger.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Roger.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did we vote?
No, I mean, we didn't vote.
I thought we did, didn't we?
Oh, yeah, we did vote, yeah, yeah.
We started talking about something else, I was like.
Okay.
Everyone was in the first shift.
So Mr. Cummings is not coming down?
Uh, no, he is homesick.
Okay, that's too bad. I hope he feels better soon. We'll move into unfinished business. We've got a line out the door, a hundred and fifty applications to choose from for the Ramsey County Planning Commission. So we're going to be here for three hours looking through those.
We're willing to approve the two-way app.
I second that.
They're willing to do it.
Okay, we, we have a motion in a second, all those positions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you guys so much for your service. Move on to new business, and we're going to ARPA update, and I'll turn it over to Adam, just, just.
Don't, don't I run charge?
Well, I guess we had a meeting of our ARPA committee this past week, last week. The interim final rule has now become the final rule on how you can spend the dollars. Candy and myself both were able to attend the webinar, community merger, on TerraTrainer, as well as, let's behold it from the Association of Companies put on. Good news, I guess, from the standpoint of, you know, we thought we were going to have our hands tied on how we can spend these dollars a lot, and it pretty much opened it wide open. So we could call it essentially lost revenue, and they're using, basically the Treasury is giving a ten million dollar exemption on that lost revenue cap. So all two-point-two million dollars, give or take, we're receiving, we can call lost revenue and treat essentially as county general funds. So the usage of it is a lot cleaner in terms of we, and, and also the reporting of it is a lot cleaner. Since it's under that dollar figure, we only have to report once a year versus once every quarter. And it allows us the ability to essentially, you know, delineate those funds a lot, a lot easier. The committee felt that, you know, to start with, we, we wanted to get a feel from the commission as a whole on, on, on our plan. The plan kind of was a rough fifty-fifty take on those dollars, where fifty percent we would use for county-wide improvements, whether it's courthouse, whether it's generator, whether it's whatever, and fifty percent of those dollars would be used for outside nonprofits to come in and ask us for, you know, things like maybe the Heritage Center needs some improvements, things like that would be an example. Not a hard fifty-fifty, but just that was the thought, was use some for outside projects in the community to show the community that they're getting some benefit from those dollars. And the county also would take the benefit from some of those dollars on things that we've maybe put off in the past too, that we should be getting done. That was just the initial intent. The thought process was, if the commission as a whole is on board with that, then we'll move forward with that concept. If the commission as a whole is not on board with that, and they'd rather see those dollars spent in another way, then they would take that, you know, that, you know, committee would then take that into account, and we'd determine where we're going forward from there then.
We also put, sorry, just to piggyback on that, we also put together parameters for scoring proposals so that, you know, if, if proposals come in, we can score them, and we had four categories that we were going to use as, as, you know, how we wanted to score each of the proposals. One was longevity, how long, how long does it, does it do a good thing in the community for? Population served, you know, how many people are going to benefit from whatever it is? What was the third one?
I remember one of them being a qualitative, just, you know, kind of little concept, like, do we think this is something that's necessary in the community or something that could be of benefit, and I can't remember the fourth.
Oh, and then the, the fourth one was match.
Oh, yes, we also, we'd like to have match dollars put in place for those nonprofit-type setups. So if, if it's a project where, that's one thing that leads on to it. These dollars can be used as a match to federal dollars or some other grant dollars. There's no, it's not like other federal dollars where you can't use federal dollars to then match federal dollars. So if we have a local nonprofit that has something that needs to get something done, and they can access grant dollars from another place, maybe say, for instance, the outdoor heritage fund, we could use these dollars locally as a match to those dollars if there's a match in place. So we're trying to essentially take those dollars, those fifty percent dollars, and try to stretch them further. So we're, we're saying, hey, if you're a nonprofit, you got an idea, and you can find match dollars someplace else, fantastic, you get pushed up the list so that we could try to make these dollars go further, essentially is what the theory is behind it. Yeah, so we had a scoring system in place, timeline, we're talking, essentially, if the commission is, is on board with the concept of what we're looking at, then we would meet next week, I think, is the thought process. We would finalize our, next week?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow. We would finalize the plans, and then we would try to come up with a plan on how we would get the ideas, you know, to solicit those proposals from nonprofits and stuff like that in the community for those dollars that we're going to have sitting there. I, I know that I've had, and, and as well as, as Lucas has had, different people come forward to us already saying, what, what are the parameters going to be, are those going to be available to the community? So the thought process is, we'd like to have this all wrapped up by that August, September timeframe, at least, so we can score things and then, you know, put those dollars out to work in the community. Mostly simply because, you know, we still have the same parameters, twenty-four, they have to be committed, twenty-six, they have to be expended. But we know there's probably going to be all kinds of different ideas and things like that that community, that community members are going to have because they know those dollars are out there, so. But the, the, the whole theory behind this is, or should I say the action plan, is that the commission is still on board with the concept of using some of these dollars for community projects versus just keeping it in-house and using it all for county projects. Essentially is the guidance that the committee would like to see, so we know that before we go out and start saying, hey, this is something we're going to have money for, we don't say that, and then they come to the opposite side saying, we could, we could use a million dollars and put it on a road project or addition to the, or maybe build a new building out here for a generator, you know, those type of things. Now that we have the ability to essentially use those funds for anything we would like.
Well, one thing we're probably going to have to put off to Blaine here, I think, that's not, but at least one, did he, but he hear all this too, so.
Yeah, I think that's not unreasonable. At the time, when we talked about having a meeting, we, we didn't know Blaine wasn't going to be available. And, you know, I know there's, I know Blaine, obviously from his perspective, something like the fair board that they're talking about possibility of a building might be something they're going to want to put in on, obviously, so, you know, there's, we've heard lots of different places that there's going to be asks, so to speak, and that's a good thing. The, the main concern, at least from my opinion, and I'm not saying that it's something that's necessarily bad, but there's going to be a lot of counties that they'll just say, we can just spend this on, you know, it's an easy fix, you don't have to ask for outside, you could just spend it for a road or something. And I'm not saying that it's not necessarily a good idea, but this is a one-time chance, we get to spend some dollars that aren't earmarked for one thing, that we can maybe do some good in the community. And Lucas and I have just been visiting, but we're saying, you know, I think the last time that we had funds that weren't necessarily committed to one specific thing, I remember when we got this, the gym built at Sweetwater, those were funds after the two thousand eight financial crisis, and those things went to, and we got a gym out of it, and look at how much that facility is used with the renovation of that school and that gym. You know, something for the community, hopefully, and it might, doesn't that, maybe one big project, maybe ten small projects, but something that we can show the community, look what we can get out of these dollars, is, is kind of the hope.
Just to add in, after our last meeting, I picked up the Maya paper. I don't know if you got a copy of that, if you didn't.
I never bought it.
Anyway, they have a work college meeting in there, they were hitting seven-point-five million, and in the article, it said seven-point-five. Anyway, they had Ward County meeting in there, they were hitting seven point five million, and in the article, it said seven point five coming again this fall.
Yes.
It was in the next year, I should probably say fall, but within the next year. And they had a list of projects that they had used, I don't know, I can't remember exactly how much it was, I'd say three million dollars of it. But it was all in-house projects that the county had, and then they, and the commission was doing it themselves, and, um, then I guess, I haven't heard lately what they did, I haven't seen it in the paper, but I haven't picked up the Mayau paper or anything.
They're gonna have some slightly different parameters too, just because they, since they're over that ten million dollar figure, they've got different.
They can't, they can't do it the same way we did.
Yeah, but they basically have the same parameters for that ten million and under. They can take that ten million and basically treat it as a county general fund expenditure, so they can use it for in-house projects, things like that too.
So, if you go over ten, then.
Then that, that additional, like, say they have the five over the top, then they have to do an equation and figure out if they can use more of those dollars in this county general fund, and they're gonna have to treat those a little bit, but there's a lot more flexibility than there was in the initial final, the interim final rule, where they basically, and I think it's reasonable, because the National Association of Counties, and they lobbied on the behalf of, of, you know, leagues and cities type of thing, saying, hey, we need to make these dollars easier to expand just from a per, uh, reported perspective. Because it's just, you know, it's, that's making sense.
You know, that's, City of Minot, the City of Minot was getting seven million, they, they had that in the article, and it was coming again this fall, or within a year. And one of the things that Ward County did, they had a, must have been a building up there, they housed their maintainer and Sawyer Northwood, and they were gonna, they'd started the project, and then they were gonna put money towards it and finish it, I think, three hundred or whatever it was, but. There was numerous projects they were addressing within the county.
But the one thing that hasn't changed is, is that, you know, the county and Candy are still on the hook for where, I guess, you know, just because it can be spent pretty much everywhere, we still are gonna need to have a receipt.
Oh, right, absolutely.
It's still federal money.
Yeah, and that's why, at, at, at the meeting, we talked, you know, we have to have parameters still on, you know, essentially, how I look at it is, if, is it a nonprofit or somebody, if they came in and asked us just for county general fund dollars, could we expend those county general fund dollars to them? So, something like the Heritage Center, or the library, or this, uh, you know, like the safe house, anybody that we in the past have said, yeah, we'll, we'll help fund your baseline budget, those are the kinds of organizations that could come and ask for these dollars. Uh, you know, maybe a senior, maybe the senior maintenance service, you know, maybe they need something, you know, things like that. Individuals, private businesses, you know, they can't come in and, and look to expend these funds, 'cause we couldn't give that money under the county general in a normal situation. At least that would be my thought process on how that would function, but. But we just, you know, it's, it, it's gonna be easier and nicer and cleaner to be able to spend the funds, which is nice.
It's amazing how easy they were doing that in Ward County, you know, just by reading the article, and we've had twelve or fifteen different projects that had already given out money to them, or added, and figured, I don't think they've ever even given them money yet, or something.
And the thought process being is that, you know, we, I'm sure we could find two point two million dollars worth of stuff to spend on, just in the county. No problem.
Well, I think we've already got twenty-five million.
Yeah, I know, it's, I mean, yeah, we could easily spend it, but I, I think in showing the community that we can help fund some of these other things, I mean, it's not just, you know, hey, we got one thing for the county or whatever, you know, I mean, we can, we can use these as one-time funds.
It, it, it's a good and bad problem.
Yes.
Be, because before, we had a certain narrow band of parameters that we had to follow, that we couldn't spend the money on. Now that it's more open, I think, uh, we can either have more asks, and we could fund a hundred different projects, we could fund one big project, we could fund, and and I think looking, whether it be long-term, and how is it gonna affect the voters of the people, or the voters of the, the county, um, down the road, is it gonna cost them money to, to, are we gonna do something that's gonna have an ongoing expense coming back to them? Is it something that's gonna be needed that we've identified is gonna, we're, we're gonna have to spend this money somewhere down the road on this particular project, or that particular project, that we're gonna have to ask the voters to, or go, go to the voters and say, hey, you know, we're gonna have to purchase X, Y, and Z, and you know, certainly one of the, the, the big issues, the, you know, the elephant in the room is, is Chris back there, with the, the siret need, and, you know, the siret radios, big, big need, unfunded mandate, um, and, and we all know that it's coming, and I think, uh, that certainly would be a big need. I've been identified that, and it will have to be replaced, um, and it's something that the state has said that we were gonna have to.
We gotta, we gotta adjust that somehow.
Yeah, and we, and we.
Whether we do it totally, or whether we do part of it, and then take it out of the general, we're gonna be very defined.
Well, and we, yeah, and we talked about it at that, at the other meeting as well, that that would be a, a county ask essentially. Um, and I think as a commission here, we're gonna have to make a determination on how we're gonna handle that, because, you know, and talking with Chris about it, we've got, obviously, we're gonna be on the hook for the Sheriff's Department radios and the emergency management radios, but then we have rural fire, we have, you know, highway, so we're gonna have to be on the hook for the highway radios.
Yeah.
But like, there's gonna be outside entities like the rural fires, that maybe it's gonna be tough for them to come up with the money on the match.
Oh, yeah.
So, then, do we wanna provide them with X amount of dollars, and then they can expend it on each department? I mean, we're gonna have to come up with some type of plan on how we're gonna do it, I mean, how we're gonna spend it on our radios locally is, well, we're just gonna buy the radios, and figure out what we need to put it in, and then we'll stick it in our budget, you know, and it's gonna be essentially general fund dollars, but can we offset those with these dollars? Yeah, of course, I mean, that's gonna be an option.
We should get the prices on them, radios, and what we need, and.
And what, what is the deadline for those too? I mean, yesterday?
Couple of years out.
Couple, couple of years out when Devil's Lake had switched over, or the Lake region gets switched over, but, um, I do have some rough numbers. It's roughly, I mean, without having the departments pick and choose which radio sets they need, one, it's about four thousand.
Four thousand radio.
Four thousand radio.
It was, it was like eight, eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand dollars, and that's mi, and then minus the fifteen hundred back or whatever,
Correct.
we're gonna be on the hook between all of the entities in the region in the county for one and a half billion dollars.
Yeah, it, I asked all the responding agencies what radios they were looking at purchasing, and all the rural fire departments, including Kevin's highway department, it was, it worked out to eight hundred thousand dollars in radios.
And, and if they did nothing, and the switchover occurred, would they have communication with, they would have no, no communication with LSE or other agencies, or?
They'd be on.
Or each other, they'd have communication with each other, maybe, and, um. Yeah.
But wouldn't that figure be less, because we included the Devil's Lake Fire Department?
It, it would be. Yeah, that number was a little high, 'cause I counted Devil's Lake Fire Department as well, like.
So, you could probably get fifty off that, not, yeah.
Um, they could have your radios.
Yeah.
In any.
Forty-five or something.
In any case, you know, that, this, I think, is one of the nice things about having a committee like this, is to act as a, as a buffer and co-later so that it can come in the form of a finished proposal. There's something where the, the committee could, could work with Chris behind the scenes, get, make sure his proposal comes in, and here's exactly what's being proposed.
Yeah.
Stuff like that, you know, so, so I, I, even though the money's now freed up to use for everything, from Lucas Wakefield as a commissioner, that kind of scares me, because it's like, you know, now we can spend it on anything, how do we wanna spend it? Having a committee that has parameters, I think, is good, but maybe I'm.
No, I, I, I think it is good, you gotta, a good outline of where the parameters are, are set, and the guidelines that you wanna go by, and you kind of thing, um.
I looked at it from the standpoint too, I mean, how many times have we said, boy, we'd like to be able to do something about that? But we just don't have the ability to stick it in our budget this year, and then it turns into next year, and next year, and next year. I mean, I can think of, and they're not huge projects, but they're, you know, there's just projects out there from some of the entities that we helped fund that would be nice to be able to get done.
You know, and there's ideas within this building, and we have talked about it. Um, you know, we have a sixty-two-year-old building that hasn't had major renovations in, in that time period, there's been some, some minor changes over the years. And, and it's a great facility, we don't wanna, but could we better utilize some of the facility by doing some remodeling, interior-wise?
Well, that opens a whole other category too, from the question of,
Yeah.
a lot of it's put is, a lot of those things we're talking about on renovation-type things are pushed by the court system.
Sure.
Because we're gonna see more jury trials, like we've seen large jury trials here, so then, the question then is, if those jury trials are coming in from other counties,
What are those other?
what are those other counties on the hook for, as well as what is on this, what's the state on the hook for? Because the, the taxpayers of Ramsey County, if we're gonna have to make some renovations to this building to make it more aligned with what they're looking for in the future, shouldn't be on the hook for all of those dollars?
Well, and I'm not necessarily.
No, and I, I don't, you know that, I'm just saying.
But I'm not necessarily talking just through the floor. I, I think there's some issues on all the floors that, that could be addressed, um, you know, the accessibility of the bathrooms on, on all the floors would be a big issue, and that would be, you know, probably my starting point, you know, from there and, and go out from that point, but, um, yeah. It, it's, it's an interesting problem to have.
Better put it off on the side till next year, three years out.
But if we're, if we're, if we're looking at, at buildings, or building of anything, I, I think, uh, timing is, is gonna become a crunch, um, you know, we got all that money at the airport, and the airport is moving forward with, we're gonna start looking at bid openings for terminal expansion, um.
See them in the ads up in Mayau here.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Well, and, and, that was part of the thought process behind, hopefully getting it done by late summer, early fall, and then we're talking, okay, if it's gonna be an indoor project, then maybe you can start doing that bid process right after that. If it's gonna be an outdoor project, you're already bidding for that next construction season in twenty-three, then. You know, so the quicker we can come up with a plan that's reasonable,
Yeah.
and then that's where we wanted to come to the commission with an update too, so we at least we know that we're still kind of in the same thought process, and we're not just gonna expend it all on one large county project, which is not necessarily a bad idea either, it's just an option.
Yeah.
But the, the thought between, I guess, I can't speak for Commissioner, but my thought is, you know, we're getting this one-time pot of dollars, it would be nice to show the community some type of benefit at the same time, so it, it, it doesn't even have to be huge projects, but just little things that the community can see we're putting some investment into the community with those dollars, instead of just, the courthouse got new lights, which is a bad thing either, but I'm just saying, you know.
Like I said, Ward County had, must have had twelve, fourteen, fifteen different projects they were funding, they already had put dollars to the projects. I remember Maupin, other net Sawyer, uh, doing up there.
And I, and I, I think we, we can show some of that as well, you know.
Well, it's like, there's even positive, even for those projects that show things to the community, like updating audio, video, visual stuff in the meeting rooms. I mean, it's a positive thing, 'cause the community uses our facility for a lot of different stuff, so.
These radio, I think, we gotta adjust that, two years, we have to adjust that.
But we've already done some stuff with, you know, some really good, good things with the dollars that we have already received, through that law enforcement, uh, you know, we, we helped the senior center out with some dollars.
Very much.
You know, so there, there are some things that we've already done, may not be at the scale that Ward County has done, but we haven't gotten the money they, they need, so.
But I don't necessarily, and that was the question of, we talked about it at the meeting as well, is, you know, one transformational project, that's a large-scale cost versus smaller-scale projects, and we're not gonna know where the money's gonna necessarily sit until we come up with the idea of this is how we're gonna split it possibly, and then come up with solicit ideas. With, there might be one great project where a million dollars is, makes sense, there might be ten, the hundred thousand at a time makes sense. We don't know until we get to that point, so.
Yeah. I, I wish there wasn't some of these unfunded things that, that we, we know is looming over the horizon.
So, we could use the dollars for more, yeah.
So, we could use the, the, the dollars for a, a big benefit, and.
I, I like radios, but I wish, we already have radios.
Yeah.
But I guess we can do radios.
Well, thanks for leading that, and if there's no other questions on ARPA, we can move on to DOT.
Sorry, I can, I'm.
No, no, you're fine, you're fine.
I didn't, I wasn't here last meeting, I gotta get home, I talk to him.
No, that's, no, it wasn't, that's fine. But yeah, so that's, that's kind of the thought on where we're at with ARPA, and, and, um, you know, we'll probably still have the meeting tomorrow, but if, if, Commissioner Brown, if you don't want us to push to the community and say.
No, I think we should, we gotta get Blaine on board, I mean.
That's fine, I just, I mean, we just.
Gotta be, use our platen there and take care of it.
I think, I think it's reasonable to have him on board, because sitting on the Fair Board, I think, is, that, they're gonna talk to him with an ask, I think, so I think it's reasonable that he goes with that.
Until when?
With, like, to your point of getting things started, rolling fifty-some counties in the same boat, trying to hire X amount of contractors.
Right, it might be out three years, I don't know.
But the quicker you get a bid that's locked, is, is kind of the thought process too, you know, within reason.
We're not optimistic, or things are gonna down in price, no?
Does that ever happen in the world?
And, I'm not.
Well, with the radios, if you minus the Devil's Lake Fire Department, that takes us down to like six twenty. Then with the rebate, it'll take us down to three eighty-seven-five.
That's not.
Well, I might have that in pocket.
A lot of money, but it's not horrible.
Those radios.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know that that's a, that's a big number, but I mean, it's not like we haven't invested in a lot of things like that that have been way more than that. I mean, so we'll find a way to pay for it.
Two years down the road, we have to do it.
Yeah, right, no choice, so we could stick it in the budget for the next couple of years too, and, and offset those costs for a lot.
Chris, do you know if the price of these radios have went up, or gonna go up, or?
Uh, I don't.
You dare ask?
I don't dare ask.
It's gonna be funny. It's kind of the same prod, prod, problem, though, fifty-three counties are looking for, maybe, you know, everybody's buying radios at the same time, so it's like, if you've got, you've got ten things, and there's twenty people, that, the people are looking for twenty of them, boy, it might raise these suckers up, or things like that.
You know, we were there the other day, and we agreed with, had to be nine hundred dollars a ton, now it came down to seven fifty. Well, we ain't going the right direction anyway, you know, how far is it gonna run down, I don't know.
DOT meeting discussion.
That's great.
Yeah.
I mean, it was so much more, I didn't finish the meeting out at High Plains that night, I went to a music concert with my granddaughter, but, uh, just the atmosphere, we were in a small room and small setting, but I think it would really help the community if we could get them out there and, you know, and get a sit-down, and, you know, and get them to explain some of this, and they seemed to come across real well, I thought.
Well, and even a, a community meeting would be good, but I think they, the offer of them to say, you know, talk, sit down and talk with those partners that are gonna be the larger partners out on that highway, so if they sat down and visited with, with, you know, John and Ryan out at High Plains, maybe, and, you know, so at least, even if they don't agree with what they're planning on doing, and, and we still have their input, and we can then bring that into the whole conversation, I think would be beneficial too. You know, maybe it would alleviate some of their concerns, maybe it would bring up different concerns, I don't know, but it's, it's, it's good that, kind of like give and take.
They were very respect, receptive of coming back up.
Yeah.
Well, you know, the, the dynamics of the traffic out there, between the recreational vehicles, and then the, all the commercial vehicles in and out of Dakota Drive Bean, and, um, you know, barnings and gravel trucks.
How about a concrete plant?
The concrete plant, and then the, um, Dakota Petroleum.
Yeah, Joe's gonna be pulling some big takes in and out of that place, he gets that, okay.
Big, big takes in and out of there, yeah, and, and, yeah, um, I think they're, they have their work cut out for them designing their, coming up with a good design that's gonna work for everybody, um.
I really think we're talking to the right people.
I, I do, I, I was very impressed, because I, I was not only, I didn't know what the J-turns, I was held on, and I've, I've softened a bit listening to them, um, so.
Well, I, I, I like the concept of, you know, like, do. Well, I, I, I like the concept of, you know, like, do, what we talked about, wider lanes, wider, you know, bull boats if they have to do it to make sure we can get trucks turned around. I'm not saying that I'm completely sold either, but I heard goods, good things.
Yeah.
You know, at least we're hopefully moving in the right direction.
So.
Reason I brought up stoplights, you know, or traffic, if you think of it whatever they wanna call them, but. In some of these controversial intersections that where the J-turns are gonna go, maybe the people that are using these all the time and live around there, maybe they'd be more receptive to a stoplight. But like she said, the feds won't let you do it.
Yeah.
You know, unless the traffic count is that big, well, damn, you die, you can't do this project without them, the state can't do it without the feds.
Well, that evening I was there, I can't remember who was visiting with the ditched stoplights, probably wouldn't be amenable either. Because people don't like to stop if they don't have.
Right, but I mean, it's slow, slow traffic down, you know, for the local people, you know.
I, I like the concept of, like they said, if they're gonna put all these turns in, hopefully the lighting and everything like that, that would be a huge thing. Because anything you can do within that corridor to make it feel different, then all of a sudden, maybe you can decrease the speed a little bit. People will recognize, okay, there's lights, there's more things trapped, you know, closing it in, then maybe fifty-five feels right versus seventy. And all of a sudden, you're, you're talking, okay, if there are crashes, less serious crashes, I mean, like you said, safety is the number one concern. But you have to balance that with making sure the people, the community are comfortable with the roadway and the corridor and everything too, so.
Yeah.
I think we're heading in the right direction.
Those higher speed crashes, speaking from experience, you know, I mean, a, a seventy mile per hour crash is probably twice as deadly as a fifty mile per hour crash. I mean, because you're just carrying that much more energy, right?
Yeah.
What if, what is it, force equals mass times velocity squared? The velocity squared is the thing that matters.
Yes, I believe so. Back to my physics class.
Safety is a huge thing, we're gonna get it paid.
Yeah, yeah.
But I thought the meeting went really well too, and, and I really appreciated the fact that they took the time to come up here and I hope that we can see them again. I don't know about the engineering firm, I have no opinion on the engineering firm. But I will say that it was nice talking to the state, so that was good.
They came across so well.
Yeah, I thought so, I, I was, yeah.
Chimed into each other and just did a really good job with three of them, I guess.
And to follow the chain of command, these are the folks that are telling the engineers what to do.
Yeah, I hope it's not the other way around, you know, hopefully, you know, these are the people that'll inform them and say, hey, you're designing it, but this is the things we heard that we need to have seen in this to make it salable to the community.
Like you said, Kevin, you could tell right away that meeting out at High Plains, goddamn, let's get this over with, you know.
Probably wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, and that came across for sure. Further discussion on DOT meeting?
Just keep in contact with them.
Homestead credit abatement.
Move it, move it.
Second.
Motion in the second, all those favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carried. Now we'll go on to discussion on Lake Region Training Center.
That's me. Um, so back in October, we made a motion, um, when Sean came to us and presented, um, about us supporting half of the Lake Region Training Center, um, and that we supported him by paying half of the bills.
Yes.
Okay, so now that the new year has started and we've kind of gotten things somewhat rolling, um, what we've come to find out is like, he has no money. So all these bills are coming in and he's scanning and emailing and I write checks once a week, the city doesn't pay, they pay quarterly. So.
So we're not getting the bills paid on time, in other words.
So I told him that I was going to bring back to, to this board to make a motion to just, like, instead of us paying half the bills, that we just cut him a check for ten thousand dollars, he takes care of the bills. He can, I kind of think the city will follow. Well, I've been talking with Linda, so, um, yeah.
Oh, what, 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 what was our half that he projected again for monthly for the year?
Um, it was like eighty-two, um, but the insurance, the insurance portion of it went up by like a thousand. Where he had, um, that it was two thousand dollars a year and it was three, like an insurance that would adequately cover.
Eighty-two hundred plus fifteen hundred covers him for the year.
He hopes.
He hopes. So that's what we've essentially committed to at that point, and if we just give him the money upfront, then that'll, he can just cut the bills out of that.
Kind of, kind of like we do with SAFE and with the, you know.
Yes. Would we still, just out of curiosity, because the, the bills were a projection.
Great.
Would we still see the bills every month, not necessarily us, but you, just to make sure that he's staying on track? Or quarterly at least, just so we know he's doing okay?
I think he's willing to.
Yeah, he seems very amenable to it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make, and we, and we haven't paid it in yet.
You know, because when we. No, no.
I'll make the motion that we cut, who's, who's running it, do they got a five-one-C three for themselves or is that Lake Region, do they have one?
Yep, yep.
So I, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, we cut ten thousand dollars or provide ten thousand dollars to that five-one-C three for the, uh, Lake Region Training Center so that they can pay the bills on time.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, uh, to annualize our payments, uh, to the Lake Region Training Center. Uh, any further discussion?
I think it will help him. It will be less work for everybody because.
Hey, I'm sure we'll meet.
Yeah, it, it just kind of got really complicated very quickly and, um, yeah.
Is this a roll call?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Brown.
Hi.
Liphon.
Hi.
Frith.
Hi.
Whitfield.
Hi.
Thank you.
Anything else on this?
No, that would, that would cut less spending for me too.
Very good, visitors and delegations, no? Okay, portfolios, uh, we'll start with Commissioner Liphon.
Okay, um, I have four, I haven't met before with Devil's Lakes since, I think it was last year. Uh, we have a meeting tomorrow as well as social services tomorrow. Um, ARPA, we talked about, um, library, um, I don't think I've mentioned since we, I think I have them, but I just wasn't sure if I could announce yet. We hired our, our new director, uh, so Celeste Urte, who was our previous assistant director is now the, is the direct, and we decided to do something a little bit different, we were going to have a director and an assistant director. Celeste is the director of operations, so she runs the operations in the op, of the overall library. And then we have, uh, Maddie Cummings, who would be Bo's wife actually. Uh, she came to us, uh, uh, she has a lot of experience with, um, nonprofits and grant writing and things of that nature. So she is going to do outreach and innovation for the, for the library. So she is going to focus on getting the word out, writing grants, trying to get money in, uh, things of that nature. So we're excited to have her on board, she has a lot of energy and she's been young, so we're excited for that. Um, we're gonna have to delineate duties a little bit, obviously, on who's kind of in charge of what, but she's jumped right in and, uh, Celeste has, has, uh, has been happy to work with her and we've been, everything seems to be going well so far, what I can see, so, uh, happy about that. Um, trying to think of what else, um.
Grant writing, no?
Yes, yeah, she worked with, uh, I'm trying to remember, I don't wanna misspeak, but when she was in college, she worked with Fargo Moorhead, uh, I don't remember if it was Opera or something like that, but she's done, done stuff like that with nonprofits. So, uh, she's kind of worked in that space before, so, uh, we really think she's gonna be a good fit. And the thought process was, Celeste will, you know, is, is closer to retirement age, she'll, she'll kind of impart her knowledge, they'll learn together and then hopefully, maybe at some point, transition at it and, uh, you know, make that work and then, you know, we'll see how that kind of functions, but we're hoping that that'll work well. Um, uh, extension, um, I know I've got meetings with them for their reviews next week, I believe. And a reminder to all the farmers out there that if you don't have your, uh, your pesticide training done, pesticide trainings are coming up, so. Don't, don't forget that. Um, other than that, uh, county housing authority, everything seems to be, we're starting to get things under control over there, so. Tim, Tim Sillian, so we're getting her taken care of at the next one, I think we're pretty well.
Very good, Commissioner Frith?
Well, Law Enforcement Center will meet tomorrow, I'll let Ed talk about that a few months, but Airport Authority, we met yesterday. Um, meetings are, and very involved and, and going well. Um, like I said, we are working on expansion, um, sixteen-point-three or something million dollars worth of, of ARPA money or COVID money that the federal government gave the airports a long time ago. We got our share and so we've got our engineer working on, uh, designs for a new terminal or a terminal expansion, I guess it will be. And then the facility operations expansion and, uh, I think things are, are moving ahead at the airport. And, um, really, really nicely, um, so, yeah, excited about that. About that then, and Christie in the tax office, let me know that he will be out of the office tomorrow and Thursday this week for training. Uh, you know, continuing education down in Fargo, so, um, if somebody is calling and complaining about the tax office being closed there, you can be more knowledgeable, so, um, sometimes when we have small staffed offices, they have to attend training and, uh, it's, I guess, no better time than, than now, so, that's probably all I have. Uh, lake level forecast from the water perspective, we'll be getting those out every two weeks from the National Weather Service. Uh, I think they're a little high on some of their numbers, but, um, we will continue to monitor those and, uh, and, uh, you know, I, I, I think we could probably expect a one and a half to two-foot rise in the lake, um, this year, given how much rain we received between end of August to the end of October, kind of thing. We were up within the entire basin on precipitation, but all depends, there's so many different parameters on how the spring comes, but they're telling us we expect a, a three, three and a half, four-foot rise, but I don't think they're, I think they're exaggerating a little bit. You know, these numbers come from a lot of different numbers that they put together and I think they're a little high, but springtime will tell.
Okay, anything else? Perfect, Commissioner Brown?
Senior Senator Cathy's in South Africa visiting Philippines, so, I'm meeting this month. And JAL, expect a new captain by the end of this month, coming from Arizona, I think I mentioned a lot. His wife took a job up at, uh, college for the daycare, third, in Australia. And the JAL run around fifty-five to sixty, they've been able to stay below the sixty-five mark and it was going pretty well as COVID. A little bit down, so.
That's correct.
We have no prisoners, always anywhere else, so.
Very good, very, very good.
That's it.
Um, I don't know that I have a whole lot to announce. I got a call from, uh, Al McKay, District Health, said that he's gonna be going around to the different o, office departments in the courthouse, uh, offering COVID tests, uh, for, for people in the public. And I told him I thought that was a fine idea, you know, just have them sort of, if somebody walks into an office and they wanna take one, they can. Um, other than that, I don't, I don't know that I've had any meetings.
So did, did they get an op at the post-rapid test, also?
Yeah, so that's good.
Cause individual, good themselves?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, actually, we, we, we did my son a couple days ago because he had a cough and we thought we'd go with that, let's see if it works.
Exactly.
I, I, I took one this morning.
Not wrong with that, that's what they're there for, that's good.
You know, I, little bit of a scratchy throat this morning, so I thought, well, they're sitting on the desk, I'll use one, so I did and I'm negative. So it must be something other than COVID.
Not fresh air.
Not fresh air, yeah.
Okay.
But, but they're, they're, they're handy and, and, uh, here for the public to use and employees, keeping employees safe and keeping building up an operational.
Absolutely, yeah, encourage their use and I'm glad, I'm glad that, you know, some of these officers were willing to have in there, I thought that was a great deal.
I think everybody took one at the Super Bowl, they must have, nobody wear it now.
Anything else for the good of the order?
You know, one thing, just keep in the back of your mind, we're doing the vote on our, increasing our ten mills and, uh, I don't know if we wanna do it the this vote or the next vote or whatever, but just keep it in the back of your mind.
When will we have deadline to make that decision again?
It's gotta be before April to get it out.
If you wanna do June?
You also have the county extension to think about as well.
I never.
If, if those votes pass, is it, the way toward it, is it good for forever after that? Or is, how, how many years is it gonna be more than that, when you go?
You can, mhm.
That probably the way to try it.
Um, I think the last time it was ten years.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, my main not concern, but it's, we're gonna have to find a way to explain when we put these on the ballot to people that if they don't pass, we've got some problems, because we've got a general fund mill cap and if we're, what, what's the two and a half for the extension?
Yep.
So that's twelve and a half mills off the top and we're at the, we're pretty much at the general fund mill cap at that point.
And we're at forty-eight now?
So, I mean, and some people might see that as a benefit, because that means we can't spend more, I guess. But at the same time, if you can't spend more, you have things, you need to spend things on, that makes it real, real tough. So we're gonna have to find a way to explain that to people.
And what is the county's cap?
Yeah.
And the number here.
Yeah.
And every hand, I don't know.
Yeah, it, it just ties your hands on the, I mean, then all of a sudden, you're gonna start seeing your road system get worse and, I mean, it's just a guarantee.
One thing they keep in mind with the road mill, so is they're there already, they're just, they're not increasing, you know, they just be staying the same.
Yeah, yeah, just a continuation of, the same with the extension, but it's just like everyone will look at it as, oh, we can get some money back. Well, yeah, but the time we get your money back means you're gonna get something worse.
Right.
Which is just how it is.
I know.
Can we get, you know, like, four-H office to sell it that way, somehow?
Um, didn't she say?
Yeah, there's things we can and cannot do, and it's the same from the commission, I would think. I mean, we can't go up and shell for it, but we can obviously explain to people what it does and what it doesn't do, so they can understand it.
It's exactly, it's exactly like the Home Rule thing, right? I mean, it's, you, you can't go out there and twist people's arms.
We're not gonna spend money and put signs up, but we can even have a good effort to explain to people why it does what it does and that it's a positive benefit.
And I'll gather some wording and, um, information that's been passed between other counties of how they're gonna do, you know, when they're gonna do it.
Well, yeah, I think that, that depends too, you know, if you wanna all go at the same time or if you're gonna wanna split them or, you know, what to look at.
I don't think that you should put both of them on at the same time.
Well, I think what you, I think what you put on second, well, how hard to go with it then, right? I mean, but, what I mean is like the next year, that people will say, well, God, we just gave them this for this other thing.
Right.
Plus we've got the city and the schools all.
Everybody's doing it, that's the thing. We almost need to coordinate with all the other public entities and say, when are you planning on putting yours on? So that we can kind of stagger them through the primaries and the generals, just, that, that's so they don't get confused too.
And when, once you got, you don't have to go through primary and general, you just go one?
Just one, just, just one.
So, so if you.
Primary is one of the.
So if it fails in the primary, you could do it again for the general.
Right.
Well, I'm wondering if we should maybe look at that road right away.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could put a vote on in the primary?
Mhm.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good question.
Because you have till.
Twenty-five.
Twenty, yeah, well, election twenty-four.
You're essentially gonna get, you're essentially gonna get four regular elections to try to get them passed.
Yes.
But you could also call a special if you really truly needed to, but you don't wanna do that, cause you have to.
Yeah, but that, but, but if, if it had been voted down a couple times and you call a special election, it would crater that. It would, I mean, it would, that's how people are, you know, it's just.
I, I don't. That's what I'm saying, I think we need to talk to the other public entities and see how they're gonna be handling there, so we can at least have a.
As we get closer to the. As we get closer to the, there'll probably be a lot more.
Yeah.
It would probably be worthwhile to try to be on the front end, right, I mean, just put it on there, get it on there. And if it passes, great, good luck to everybody else.
The only one that could do this is the school district, they're ahead of the primary.
That is only the city, I mean, oh yeah, I did school districts.
City's gonna be about the same time.
But the school districts, yeah, but the school district's gonna have to do theirs whenever they have.
Right.
Um, their election, and their election's usually in July, was it June? Is it first Tuesday?
First Tuesday, I think.
So it's before our election day then?
Well.
Right around the same time?
I don't know, because they're trying to coordinate with hours now.
Oh, okay, okay, well, that'd be on the same time then.
Yep, instead of having, um, you know, city vote at this school, rural vote at this school, that you just have. A section of the memorial building, that's the school election over there, this is the, you know. So we'll have to do some creative.
Might be all on the same day, but city could have the first.
Well, the city will be June, you know, the city's on the same as ours.
Yeah, cities are those.
Each one is just gonna be the same.
Yep.
So the NANSA, anyway.
So. Fun times.
All right, well, anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some.
For adjourned.
Thank you all.